All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting, right? Yeah?
My apologies. Technically, it's a special meeting. The agenda was, didn't say special.
Okay. So, call order, the special meeting of the City Council from Monday, October 24th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby.
Here.
Councilmember Chorko.
Here.
Councilmember Nofold.
Here.
Okay. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak about any item described on the agenda prior to the council's consideration of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, Section 54954.B, remarks are limited to items described in the notice for the meeting. Remarks are limited to not more than three minutes per speaker. Any speakers? Probably not. Okay. All right. Special orders of the day. We are going to be interviewing candidates and making an appointment to fill the current City Council vacancy in District 2. This term will end in November 2024. All right. Do you take them in any particular order?
So, we do have them listed in alphabetical order on the agenda. Your first interview would be with Gary Lowe.
Okay, Gary, come on up. Really just, no. Sorry, we're getting our little papers organized here. Okay. I'm just gonna, there's about five questions we're just ask you and just have a conversation with us.
Sounds great.
Okay. Please provide an opening statement to introduce yourself and your involvement in the community.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Hasselbrink and City Council. Thank you for having me to interview here today. I guess I'll start by saying that I had to call Maria, our department chair, and ask her when I started with the planning commission, and she told me January of 2010. So, I'll be starting my 13th year in January with the planning commission. But I'll back up a little bit and tell you that I went to Hopkinson Elementary, Oak Junior High, and Los Alamos High School. I was born in Seal Beach. My parents are still in that same house in Seal Beach. I bought my first house in Los Alamos in 1997, which was in Carrier Row. I then moved to the Highlands in 2004, and then currently in Greenbrook, I moved there in 2016. So, I've seen a little bit of the city. My kids also went to Hopkinson, Oak, and Los Al. So, went to the same schools as I did. Three of them went to Long Beach State.
Go Beach!
However, my oldest daughter went to the best California State University school. Anybody know what that is? Dominguez Hills. I graduated from Dominguez Hills. So, but yeah, three of my, three of my kids went to Long Beach State. I was going to say that I'm also a wave. So, I went to the George Grazzadiio School of Business, actually, actually worked for George Grazzadiio when I was going to business school there. So, yes, I'm, I'm a wave.
Jordan and I are waiting for a connection now. What about us? All right, Jordan?
My brother went to UCLA.
All right, all right, I'll take it.
And then, I didn't get a full lot of.
Actually, I actually went to, that's where I got my undergrad, Long Beach State.
Okay. All right. We're all covered then.
How'd that football game go?
I've always been a Bruins fan, always been, always been a diehard Bruins fan. Luckily, hopefully, no one's going USC here, so I don't know. I'm just be safe. So, I've been in banking for 29 years. So, actually, I said 29 years, it's actually 31 years, which is kind of scary when you think about it. I actually worked for a mortgage bank for two years out of college, and then have worked in banking for 29 years. With that, I, although I've been in banking my whole life, I love real estate. I've always been kind of a real estate guy. All my little side projects and fun projects have been in real estate. As a matter of fact, I first became, came in front of a planning commission meeting, I was doing a minor land subdivision in LA County back a few years ago. I wasn't allowed to do too many projects. My wife didn't, with the four kids, my wife didn't appreciate me being always gone on the weekends doing those projects. But that's when I kind of actually got a little curious about the planning commission and why I eventually joined that. And then, unlike like a lot of you in the LA YB world, I was in the softball world. So, I kind of went through the softball world with the rec department and the booster club at, all the, all the boards doing that and so forth with the softball, with softball world. I'll pause there.
Okay. What do you believe is Los Alamos' biggest issue?
So, I thought of, you know, three things. One of the things, the themes that kind of comes up is you're surrounded by, you know, a big box retail center around us, and we don't have that here in Los Alamos. So, that would be, I think, a nice thing to have here in Los Alamos that we, we kind of, you know, would like to have. You know, one of the, a little bit of concern is the hospital. Hospital, they don't want it to get too big, you know what I mean? They don't want it to become so big where it, we don't become a diversified city as that kind of grows and develops as well. And I think the last thing I'd mention is, is, you know, being told by the state what we can and can't do. So, the mandates and the state law that maybe don't necessarily coincide with what we'd like to see here in Los Alamos, you know, which, can't really control that, but that's something that's, that's always a little bit of a concern.
Okay. What do you think the best thing about Los Alamos is?
So, I think you have to start with the people. You know, when my kids were younger, it was a little easier to meet people. I met a lot of people when the kids were younger. When you get older, you don't get to meet as many people as you do, but definitely the people. And you can't think of Los Alamos without thinking of the school district. So, the school district is what draws, you know, a lot of people here, drew some of you here, I think, probably with your kids and so forth. So, that kind of leads into the people as well. You know, you get people that want good quality schools are usually good quality people too in our community. Then, lastly, I would say just location. We're in a great location, you know what I mean? We're in Southern California, great climate, access to LA, access to Orange County, we're in a, we're in a great spot to be.
Okay. What's your position on fiscal responsibility and budget surplus?
So, I'll, I'll tell two stories here, just to maybe lead you to get my thoughts or not my thoughts. But a couple of weeks ago, I was, did a little epoxy project on my garage floor, and I was at a concrete store. It was a young man that was helping me out, and we were talking about it and what I was buying and this and that. He was asking me about the project, so this is just for myself, I wasn't doing it for somebody else, it was just my own project. And he says, I said, "Well, I'm not, I don't do this for a living, but I'm, I work for a bank." And he says, oh, he goes, "I really want to get a car loan. He said, "My credit score's 500, and they keep denying me." And I said, you know what? I said, um, we talked about his credit score and maybe how to improve it and so forth. And I said to him, "If I can really give you some good advice is, is that, you know, you should really take out a loan when you're buying an appreciating asset, and don't take out a loan when you're buying a depreciating asset." And he goes, "Well, you mean, kind of like, like I should buy, like buying a house?" And I thought, "Yeah, yeah, like taking out a loan when you buy a house." And I, he goes, "Well, so you think I should buy a house rather than buying a car?" And I said, "I didn't really think that, I wasn't really thinking that to tell him that." But I said, "Yeah, I think you should buy a house rather than buying a car." And he wanted to buy, you know, a big fancy seven series BMW, and he already drove a two-year-old Chevy Impala. And it's like, you know, maybe you should save for the car you want to buy, but, you know, maybe take out a loan against, against what you want to buy. And the other, you know, quick story is, I have a Realtor friend here, local, local real estate friend, and he is a, his kind of mantra is refi till you die, right? Leverage as much as you can leverage, take out, especially against your primary residence, you can get your cheapest capital out of your primary residence, and you should use that money and buy more real estate, buy more real estate. And there's kind of the other side of the coin, which is, you know, we buy a house and we want to pay that house off. We want to retire and have a debt-free house when we retire and work towards paying that off. And I tend to lean towards, more towards that side psychologically and, and thought process-wise, is I want to retire and not have a debt on my house instead of being leveraged as much as I can leverage. Not to say that he's wrong, in fact, he's probably right, he's probably a lot wealthier than I am, but I can tell you a little bit about, that's, maybe tells you a little about my thought process and the way I think.
And what are your long-term strategies or ideas for the city?
So, I really like the town center concept that we're looking towards, especially on Pine Avenue. I think that that's a great thing for the community and to have that community involvement. I know it's a long process and it'll, you know, we got to, you know, set the stage for that to happen. So, I think that's a, that's a great, it's a great thing to, to work towards. I also think, you know, long-term is, we want to keep Los Alamos, Los Alamos. We don't want Los, we don't want Los Alamos to be Long Beach, we don't want Los Alamos to be Irvine, we want it to be Los Alamos. So, to keep, to keep Los Alamos basically the way it is, you know what I mean? It's, it's a good city, and it's a great city. And I think that, you know, we have a, a great City Council that sets great policy. I think we have a great city manager that implements that policy. So, I think it's just kind of staying that course and, you know, and, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it, kind of a thing, you know what I mean? Continue to, just to do well for our, for our community.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Why, Gary, why, why do you want to be on the City Council?
You know, that's a, that's a good question, and I'm sure we've all asked for that ourselves a little bit. So, I had this experience being on the planning commission, and I just, I think I wanted to, as I've learned a lot about the city and about our, our city and how it works and like that, I just kind of wanted to share those thoughts, and I've gotten better at it. I'm by far means not great at it, and I still have a lot to learn when it comes to that, but just trying to add some of those, those, more of those thoughts and more of those things to, you know, to make the, make the community great. I really do like, I really do enjoy, love our city. So, I've been here my whole life, thought about leaving and never have, you know what I mean? So, I stay here.
Thank you.
Plus, you know, Chad, you still, you still got me when we did our first Zoom meeting about the bar, right? When you had that bar in the background, and I go, "Where, where is that bar? Where is that bar?" And like that, and it was all just, I don't know if you've had that same one or something like that, I go, "I got to find that place." And he said, "Yeah, I'm working from my bar." And it's like, and I finally realized that Zoom and, and Teams, you don't have that, you can have those backgrounds, my first experience with that, so.
Very professional, Chad, thank you.
If I'd not have said that, I should, maybe I shouldn't have said that. But it got me, I was like, so, like, wait, what is this? What is this?
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next victim, Tricia Murphy. Come on up.
Oh, my gosh.
We're just trying to, we're just trying to relax you a little bit, take a deep breath.
Okay, mediation, okay.
All right.
There we go.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
So, my name is Tricia Murphy. I've lived in Los Alamos for about seven years. Prior to that, I had lived in Long Beach. I had moved here to Rosmore. I had no inclination about the city, I knew nothing about this area. And I had went to the mobile gas station and a person, I was just on the phone, and a gentleman, after I got off the phone, he said, "I was thinking of putting my daughter into private school in Long Beach." And he says, "No." He goes, "The school district here is much better." And I said, "Then a private school?" And he said, "Yes." And I looked up, and I was completely amazed about how amazing the school district was. And so, I stayed here, and my daughter went to Hopkinson. From there, I met my husband. He is an avid trainer, and he is into health beyond I can ever be. I enjoy Sour Patch Kids with a side of Oreo cookies. He's more like a, hello, what's I'm saying? He's more like a vegetable-drinking, fruit-eating kind of person. We ended up having two additional children, they're twins, they're currently at Oak. My eldest daughter, Rain, graduated from Los Alamos, and she is now at Dartmouth College. And if that's not an evidence of how much Los Alamos does for its, its students and its parents and its families, she's a testament to it. She is now excelling at Dartmouth as a sophomore, and she's also playing rugby. My daughter is also, my second daughter is playing soccer, and she's also receiving additional skills at the deaf touch in Los Alamos. Again, everything to come together, that's what I love about Los Alamos. Everybody comes collaboratively to get together and make sure that every student, parent, family is well taken care of. My son, he's never been like his father, who was a track star and a football star at Poly, shh, another Long Beach thing. But he finally found his way this year, and he has joined the Los Alamos volleyball recreation program, and he absolutely loves it. So, that is a little bit about my family. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Diamond Bar, which is a small city just like Los Alamos, which is one of the, another reasons I was attracted to Los Alamos. Long Beach really wasn't representative of who I am, just because, like I said, I grew up in a small town. It was a small town when we first moved there. I was born in Brooklyn, New York. My parents are first-generation immigrants from St. Lucia in Jamaica. They met at Baruch College in New York and couldn't stand the cold, so we moved here to California, and I've been here ever since. I attended Cal State Fullerton, where I graduated with a political science degree in 1997. From then on, I worked at an investment firm for about 16 years, and I thought I was done with investment management and asset management and real estate, but then I went ahead and followed the partners to start their own firm in El Segundo. So, I started working for them and dealing with operating companies, alternative opportunities, and assets of about $22 billion, where I managed that as a specialist at Westport Capital Partners. After that, like I said, it was never really something I was truly in love with or fond with. So, this year, I actually retired from asset management, and I've started to explore my, my creative side. So, I started my own business called Fickle Bliss, where I am currently editing and writing college admission essays. To say I'm busy is to say at least, I've been really busy. This week, I've already written 13 essays. So, but it's something I truly enjoy and I love to do, and so that's what I'm doing right now. How I've worked, I've been here as a commissioner since 2018 for the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts. I was also reappointed in December 2021, and I am currently the vice chair. I've also been a member of the school site council at Hopkinson Elementary as well as Oak Middle School. I was a representative on the Los Alamos Unified School District Human Relations Task Force, and I also contributed to the establishment of professional and effective programs and services designed to support the safety and student services for the Los Alamos Unified School District. I was also a parent, of course, volunteer at Los Alamos High School for many of the dances. That was always interesting. And this year, I, I became a director for District 2 for the Los Alamos Community Foundation. I'm also, I just recently became certified as a bartender, and I really expedited that because I wanted to make sure I would be a bartender for our foundation charity event held on November 12th. I'm also certified notary public. I'm notary, I was really busy during COVID. I'm a notary loan signing agent. I'm a certified U-Jam cardio dance instructor. I love, yeah, I did find that. I don't eat well, but I do work out with cardio dance. I was also an AYSO referee, and I'm currently studying for the LSAT exam. Yes, and I feel there's 24 hours in a day I try to use as much as possible, in addition to also helping my kids, of course. And I just want to say I'm always welcoming challenges, which is why I try to impress upon my kids to stay committed and always explore, you know, options in, in your life, because you never know where it may take you.
Chad, I think we found your dance instructor.
I was writing that down.
Yep, perfect.
I will be there, Winter Wonderland, you'll see me on stage, it's a whole different person then.
What do you believe is Los Alamos' biggest issue?
Well, I currently believe that a lot of people don't take into consideration that there are needed items such as infrastructure development, parks and recreation, and public works that increase annually for functioning cities such as Los Alamos, which consequently requires a need for additional revenue to be attained. Residents of Los Alamos are concerned about how their money is spent, where it is used, and if their money will provide prosperous growth for their families into the future. For city elected officials, establishing a shared vision, exploring potentials, setting goals, and taking official action to develop and adopt an annual budget that expresses the city's vision, values, priorities, and strategic goals is challenging, to say the least. For residents and their elected officials, the biggest issue, I believe, is finding a balance that represents the best interest of the majority of residents while respecting the rights of all.
What do you think the best thing about Los Alamos is?
Well, there are a lot of attributes that, Los Alamos is just an extraordinary place with exceptional schools, dedication to public safety, clean and safe surroundings, perseverance, transparency, commitment to longevity, revitalization projects, implementation of biker-friendly transportation plans, reinvesting in the city, and of course, the widely successful parks and recreation events, which, you know, I contribute to. I believe that each of these qualities contribute to treasured life in Los Alamos. Moreover, I think the best thing about Las Alamos is that everyone is committed to working together to integrate ideas and establish a shared vision for residents, businesses, the school district, city staff, and surrounding cities. Los Alamos is a hallmark for successful community interaction and creating a civic culture of mutual respect that makes progress possible.
Thank you. And what is your position on fiscal responsibility and budget surplus?
Well, I'm conservative on fiscal responsibility. My goal is to work collaboratively to attain performance with less than commensurate risk. It is my belief that a superior record is best built on a high batting average rather, rather than a mix of excellent successes and dismal failures. It's necessary to develop cost-effective solutions that provide measurable results with tenacity and passion. I believe in the ESG, or environmental, social, and governance considerations, which directly impact financial outcomes. It reflects a transparent alignment of vision, values, and collective goals with residents. Budget surpluses are acceptable as long as the best interests of the community, businesses, parks, and infrastructures requiring improvement or repair are initially fully addressed.
Okay. And what are your long-term strategies or ideas for the city?
Again, I'm all about collaboration, so I believe that we need to share opinions, have an open dialogue, and innovative thinking. As a city, it is important to plan and grow in order to provide a healthy future for everyone. We need to continue engaging the community in the process of developing a comprehensive plan that ensures that everyone works together to create a shared vision for the future and that everyone takes part in the work of achieving it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just because I already asked it, and I think you've kind of addressed this, but why do you want to be on the City Council?
I want to be on the City Council because I think it's an extension of being a commissioner. I've always enjoyed assisting as much as I can with the city because I love the city. It, it reflects who I am and what my family is. We are committed to helping everyone. The first week we moved here, our neighbors brought us pies. My, I mean, I've never had that before. My kids go outside and play. I don't even have an issue or confidence that anything will happen to them, so the safety of the city is remarkable. My kids, they're doing excellent. Like I said, my daughter is now in Ivy League, and she's making it inspiring for her brother and sister to always do that. So, for this city, I love it, and there's nowhere else I'd want to be, other than New York. But we'll talk about that later.
Anybody else? You guys are shy. Thanks, Tricia.
Mark is asking the question that I would be most interested in.
Well, then find another question. Mr. Pats, come on up.
Well, I noticed something very interesting about Trish, Gary, and myself. All three of us are the vice chairs of our various commissions.
Oh, wow.
Interesting enough. I do apologize, I'll probably answer most of your five questions in my remarks.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members, my name is Daniel Pats, and I'm here today to apply to fill the vacant City Council seat in District 2. I immigrated to the United States from South Africa in 1979 and became a naturalized citizen in 1986. I am married, and my wife and I have one son. Our son just completed five years of service in the United States Navy and is back in college, thank goodness. My wife and I moved to Los Alamos in 2008 for the school district, and our son is a 2015 Griffin. I worked for Southern California Edison, the local electric utility, for 35 years until my retirement in 2017. The last 10 years of my career with Edison were spent as a senior project manager, managing large operational compliance audits. I spent 10 years early on as a substation maintenance foreman. I began my career blue collar and worked my way up to management after completing bachelor's and master's degrees, and again, Cal State Long Beach and the University of LaFune. I successfully managed Edison's 2015 operational compliance audit with no findings. What's interesting about these audits are they're performed every three years on all large utilities nationwide, and every six years on smaller independent power producers, generators, public utility districts, and all other entities that are connected to the national wholesale grid. These audits are company-wide operational audits performed by an outside agency called the North American Electric Reliability Corporation, or NERC. I have many years of experience negotiating with large public and private entities on major transmission and distribution contracts. Some were large utilities, independent power producers, and aggregators, while others were cities, and a few were public utility districts. I learned very early on in the utility world that we are all joined at the hip for a long time. Most contracts run about 30-plus years or more. So, because of this, all negotiations needed to be a win-win for all parties. I have faithfully served my community on the traffic, on the Los Alamos Traffic Commission since 2013. Prior to that, I served on the Personnel Appeals Commission from 2008. Some highlights from my time on the Traffic Commission include the Old Town West Traffic Calming Project, in which the Traffic Commission, with the help of staff, developed and approved a successful plan to reduce and alleviate daily cut-through traffic in Old Town West during peak morning and afternoon traffic hours. This was during my tenure as chairman of the Traffic Commission. We had several very heated, standing-room-only public meetings. We were able to alleviate the public's concern and delivered a quality product. Next up, we developed a citywide speed bump policy, which was later approved by council and became a municipal guideline, which allows residents of the city who want a speed bump, by the way, we don't recommend that, but for those that want it installed in their neighborhood, they can apply for one and get one with some skin in the game from the residents. Next, we worked with staff on the citywide street improvement project, which is still ongoing. And recently, I introduced and agendized an upcoming discussion on the Traffic Commission to address the problem of the lack of oversight of e-bikes. I don't know if you've run into this, or heard about this, or seen this issue on our streets, but it is very real, and hopefully, we can develop something before a child is killed. The issue is young people under the age of 18 riding e-bikes fast without helmets and ignoring common sense, the rules of the road, traffic, and pedestrians around them. I asked staff for a study on the safety and use of e-bikes in Los Alamos. This could eventually lead to a citywide ordinance to protect our kids. This issue is not unique to Los Alamos. Like many other issues in our society, this has become a problem without a solution, as technology has leapfrogged ahead of our laws. The state legislature and the Department of Motor Vehicles are absolutely behind the eight ball on this one. It's an issue, and we need to act. If we can develop a workable solution in Los Alamos, it could become a model for other cities, and eventually, the state legislature may follow. The last highlight was a citywide parking permit review and approval process in which we introduced a sunset clause to ensure that parking permits are reviewed at least every five years. I not so fondly remember a time when council members in Los Alamos were at each other's throats constantly. I like the way the City Council is working together now for the good of the residents, the business community, and city partners. I believe that it takes a well-functioning City Council to deliver on the promise of good government for our wonderful city. I love Los Alamos for its highly-regarded school district, its small businesses, and variety of restaurants, safety within the city, thank you, chief. variety of restaurants, safety within the city, thank you, chief, its ongoing events and the small-town feel. When people ask me about our city, I describe it as Mayberry because it reminds me of that fictitious town. What would I do to improve Los Alamos? I would strongly suggest that we pursue running a recycled water pipe from Long Beach next door. It's the pipes and the sprinklers with a purple color. I've asked that question of staff in the past and was told that it was prohibitively expensive to run a pipe under the creek because of the depth and other issues. With the ongoing water shortage and drought with no end in sight, perhaps this is a good time to revisit the issue. With potable water costs going up, I can't believe that we would not benefit from significant savings watering all city facilities and parks with non-potable water. I think a cost-benefit analysis is needed to show what the cost versus the payback period would reveal. Lastly, I have known the Bates family since 2008 when I served with Marilyn on the Personnel Appeals Commission. We are friends and neighbors. I cannot hope to fill Ron's large shoes with his wealth of knowledge, his experience and integrity. But I would like the opportunity to continue Ron's methodical, logical, thoughtful and diligent hard work for the city. If I am selected, I pledge to work tirelessly for our community. As a retiree, I have plenty of time to devote to the city. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I know you mentioned a couple of issues with the e-bikes and the purple pipe. Do you have any other issues that you believe are confronted with Los Alamos right now?
None that have not already been mentioned.
Okay. What you think is the best thing about Los Alamos?
Well, the best thing that I think about Los Alamos is the highly regarded school district, its small businesses, its variety of restaurants, the fact that we have our own police force and the safety within the city, city events and the small-town feel of Los Alamos.
What's your position on fiscal responsibility and budget surplus?
As an MBA, I believe strongly in being fiscally responsible, just like our personal budgets. You don't spend more than you bring in if you don't have to. I fully realize there may be extraordinary circumstances that occasionally arise that creates a situation where that may not be feasible. Budget surpluses should be used responsibly. The majority of the surplus should be carefully invested and saved for a time when it is needed. A small portion can be used for needed city use when no other source is available.
And what are your long-term strategies and ideas for the city?
Well, the best idea that I have that I think really would save the city quite a bit of money, but we need a cost-benefit analysis on that, is running a recycled water pipe from Long Beach. There's a tremendous savings involved in that. I don't have the numbers. They need to be run, but that would be my best guess.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think he's answered it. Of course, if you have anything to add, anything more to add about why you want to join the city council, Daniel.
Just that I really enjoy the city, love the neighborhood I work, I live in and my wife and I walk it twice a day, every day, morning and evening, and we feel very, very safe and very comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Council at this time, I'm going to pass out the indications of support. If you wouldn't mind filling those out and passing them back and I'll read the tally aloud. Then we will still need a motion and in a second for the appointment. An appointment will be by roll call vote.
This, by the way, you're all interviewing for a, for a, a position that requires you to make some really tough decisions. From my perspective, this is the toughest decision that we make because we've got three really good candidates here and it's not a one-time vote on one limited issue. We're, we're really choosing someone to represent the entire city of Los Alamos, which is a decision better suited to the voters, but we're, we understand why we're in this position right now. So I just wanted to say that from my perspective, all three of you would make wonderful council members and we can't pick all three of you though, as you understand. So thank you for interviewing today.
We have a tie. We have two indications of support for Daniel Pats and two indications of support for Tricia Murphy. Would you like to vote again or would you like to entertain a motion?
Let's. Let's arm wrestle. I think let's take another vote. It would be my suggestion, but mayor, this is, this is your call.
No, that's fine.
I'm just going to pass you back your same ones if you just make a mark to the left side of the box.
We need music.
Just go ahead and sing.
We have the same results.
So I'm just going to go ahead and entertain a motion for nomination of office of council member. I'll go ahead and start. I'll nominate Tricia Murphy. Are there any other further nominations?
I'll second.
Do you need a second?
We do, well, we will need a second.
Okay. Okay, any other nominations?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to nominate Daniel Pats.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and vote on the first nomination of Tricia Murphy and roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Is it relevant at this time? I'll stick with my vote, no.
The motion carries.
And once again, as Councilmember Chirco said, thank you all very much. It's always nice to have more than one, which means it's a good place to serve and we encourage you to continue on serving. Commissions are vitally important to the city and what we do up here. So once again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your continued service and we'll see you in other events and other things moving on. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Tricia. Oh, you weren't paying attention, were you, girl? And so, come on up. So Tricia, if you want to come on up, we're going to swear you right in now.
Stand right over there. Uh, this side and then into the microphone.
Wait, I'm the right side. I sound better on that.
So I'll be in the paper.
You're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tricia Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear truth, faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I think with that, we're adjourned?
Doesn't she get to sit up here at least before we adjourn?
We're going to shuffle around. You're going to come over here.
All right.
Because I got to keep better watch on you. And technically, you're supposed to be here anyway, immediate past.
I'll be gone soon. I'll be gone soon.
What, 64 days?
Are you counting it?
Anyway, thank you, everybody. And our next meeting is sometime in November?
November 14.
Thank you.
Thank you.